Good evening. This is Tuesday, November 28th, 2023, meeting of the Town of Berlin Planning Board. As a preliminary matter, please note this meeting is being recorded and some of the attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. The ugly man T-shirt you decided to wear tonight or anything you intend to or not screen share on your computer. Everything that you broadcast will be captured and recorded forever and ever and will wind up as a TikTok video to be shared amongst your neighbors and friends. This is Tom Sanford, Chair of the Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that the members of the Planning Board are present and can hear me prior to me calling the meeting to order. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
And with a quorum of the board present, I call this meeting to order at 7:34 PM Tuesday, November 28th, 2023. This is an open meeting of the Planning Board being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. Specific information and general guidelines for the remote participation by members of the public can be found on the Town of Berlin website. The Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows and encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening using the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, which includes links for the public to join this meeting. I'll introduce each speaker on the agenda after their concluding remarks. I'll invite each board member by name to provide any comments, questions, penetrating insights, and or motions. Please hold all your insights until your name is called. Board members and speakers on the agenda, please remember to mute your telephone or computer when you're not speaking. Speak clearly to ensure that accurate minutes are recorded. And for any response, please wait until you yield the floor, state your name before speaking. If a board member wishes to engage in conversation with another member of the board, please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations at the same time. Lastly, please note that each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you all for your understanding and cooperation. So, at this point, I'll take a motion for to accept the minutes of our last meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Jay, you got my note about the typo?
Uh oh.
Yes, there was a typo that was mentioned.
I didn't think anybody'd find it, but they did. Okay.
The Easter egg has been found?
Yeah.
So.
We're also going to include.
With the correction of the minutes, I will ask you to vote. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Is there any other mail or any other things that we need to take up really quickly before we launch into our first?
Not that I'm aware of.
No, okay. So our first order of business is the folks from Solomon Pond Mall. Matt Batter.
Matt is here.
Okay, cool. Thank you. And Liz.
Liz Kelly.
And probably Peter Hoffman, because he's been participating in discussions with them and they may have brought along a third party.
Hi, guys.
Good evening, Matt. How are you?
I'm well. How are you?
Good, thank you.
Matt, is there anyone else that should be promoted?
Just Liz for tonight.
Okay.
So I think we are all set. Are you guys good?
We're good.
So I think Tim's probably given you guys an update and I know there's been some conversations in the past about Solomon Pond Mall. Let me take a step backwards. So you have the name Matt Bader. Spinoso Real Estate, some Director of Development for the company. We are the operator and managing agent for the mall. As I just mentioned, you know, Tim has had some conversations, I'm sure, with all of you. Liz Kelly, who's on the call, some of you may know her as the General Manager, and I met with Tim, Peter Hoffman, who's on, as well as another member of the town on October 25th. And we had a few objectives in mind for that conversation. I think the most important was sort of discussing the future of Solomon Pond Mall. And I would say, you know, particularly how the mall landscape has changed in the last 10 to 15 years, probably, most notably, and raising the question of whether or not there were ways that we could make the mall a little bit more robust or sustainable long term. You know, I think, I know Tim was a member of the Planning Board when the mall was built. Tom, maybe you were as well. You know, when malls were built in 70s, 80s, and the mid 90s, in this case, I don't think anybody ever envisioned that uses other than retail would be a part of that environment. And I mentioned the changing landscape as we've observed a shift in consumer habits. Again, I think it's really been most notable the last decade. You'll find examples, and I'm happy to share some if you would like, of mall developers across the country starting to replace GLA with other uses, like retail GLA. So initially, it was theaters, bowling alleys, entertainment destinations. You guys are familiar with Apex, you know, Dave and Buster's, and sit-down restaurants. I would say more recently, the trend has been towards residential apartments, medical offices, hotels. I think in certain special circumstances, you'll see churches or self-storage incorporated into the mall environments. Essentially, my point is the shopping malls have shifted significantly and we want to make sure that we're having conversations with municipalities, not just Berlin, but across our portfolio, about ways that we can address this. We've had success speaking with other municipalities about this. Generally, our approach has been to engage on establishing an overlay district. But, you know, during our conversations and some of the prior due diligence, obviously Solomon Pond Mall is part of an existing district already. And it was recommended, or suggested at least, that potentially amending the district that exists today would be the best path forward. So I don't think we want to take up a ton of your time. I would say that there are a few items that I would hope to address this evening. First, Tim knows this, you know, we have to, or it's my job, maybe with Liz's help, to prepare a recommendation for our team internally. And Tim was very, I think, firm in his recommendation that we start to have this conversation and create this dialogue. While we may feel like it's the best, or I may feel like it's the best path forward for the shopping mall, I still have people that I report to that I have to get off and that I have to get sign off on. So, you know, I think there was some question over how firm we were in our decision to move forward on something like this. Tim said, let's get together, let's at least have the conversation, get the wheels spinning. So we want to at least engage and start the dialogue, which I think is what we're doing tonight. And then we want to help, I guess we want to understand, I would say, second, if the town would be willing to engage with us on this effort and support it or help us navigate through that process. And I do think that, you know, I mentioned mix of uses before, residential hospitality, et cetera. You know, obviously, those are a component of what we're trying to accomplish here. But we would want to evaluate all aspects of the overlay district, including the development plan and various setback, various requirements such as setbacks, parking ratios, building height, et cetera. So just want to understand if the planning board would be open, having those conversations with us and helping us navigate this process. And then additionally, I would say, lastly, as part of preparing my recommendation, I need to understand with some level of certainty, and I understand that none of you, you know, can guarantee what will be required of us as we hopefully step through the process to, you know, present and maybe gain some sort of approval in the town meeting forum. But we're trying to understand what would be necessary, right? From the Planning Board's point of view, what are supporting materials or third-party reports that you all think would be helpful and illustrating to your constituents, the voters at the town meeting forum, that this is a generally a good idea, a good path forward? Obviously, you know, I understand that the traffic outflow and inflow goes through the city of Marlboro, but traffic is something that comes to mind, right? How does the traffic, how are the traffic expectations of the mid 90s when the mall was fully parked most weekends compared to what is the current situation today and what a future development scenario would look like? So traffic is something that come to mind. Tim and I have had conversations about some of the neighboring residential communities. I think, I don't want to put words in your mouth, Tim, but that buffer, he helped me understand the evolution of the green or the landscape buffer that was there. But we've taught as protection for some of the residents on River Road, but we've talked about maybe some of the other supporting documents that might be necessary. So I would say, just want to start the dialogue, would like to understand if the town would be, you know, supportive in working with us on this? And then, and lastly, what the town thinks would be, what the town thinks it would be wise of us to prepare in advance of a town meeting forum?
Okay. That sounds like a pretty well thought out plan for us to look at. I know that, you know, this is just preliminary conversations and we agree, the Planning Board agrees, I think, I don't know if I speak for the rest of them, but myself, that the property is underutilized and could use some injection of some new life and whether that be, you know, whatever that takes. We've seen other malls around our area, and that's the only thing I can speak to. I don't know what happens in Texas or California, and it could really kill us. But around our area, you know, I know that there's been attempts to revitalize some things with some creative uses and things like that. So I would think that no matter what you guys come forward with, I think that we'll have an open ear. We may not like it, but, you know, we're just a small board and you have to go before the town, and that's the one that's going to give you the up or down, thumbs up, thumbs down. We can guide you and I'm sure we will have something to say. We all will have no problem with telling you what we think. But I think this is a pretty good step in the right direction.
I appreciate that.
So how do you want to, how do you want to frame this and what's your timeline?
Well.
Not with how you want to frame it. Are we just, is it like an open dialogue, a charade, or how do you want to go about? These are the, you know, the five top ideas that we have and then take it from there? Or how do you guys want to?
I think we could, I guess I would, I would, I guess I would come at it from two different directions. I think first, we could, we could read through the existing overlay district and make recommendations on this, the general items that we think should be up for discussion. Or we can just approach it very high level, like you indicated, and say, these are, you know, generally what we're seeing from at a national level and what we think would be applicable to the center. So we can go about it either way. We do have to take the, I do have to report back based on the conversation today, share the support, finalize the timeline and the strategy and get the recommendation to our client for approval. I do think there's support there, but to the extent of how much support I can't speak to. I did speak with Tim on a couple of occasions. I do understand that the warrant is typically finalized in mid-February. So there is obviously a need to move, I think, rather quickly. While we all, I think, would like to attest that we can move quickly, the reality is we're in the holiday season. There are fewer meetings, people just aren't as available. And, you know, I would like to try and navigate this process as quickly as we can.
Okay. So that being said, and perhaps a dual approach, like you said, might be wise. But I think that before we, I think one takes precedent over the other. So in other words, if we know what the major ones that move the needle for you guys in terms of redevelopment, that may drive how we look at the development agreement and the existing overlay. You know, obviously, we're not going to just scrap what we have. But if you guys say that you want to build rockets in the backyard, we're going to say, nah, I don't think so. It doesn't kind of dovetail with what we're thinking. You say you want to do a hotel or something like that, I can see that that is viable because of, you know, the rinks that are up the street. So I can see that that was probably something that is, works for you guys, works for the town, you know, and has a chance of not having to have you guys come back in five years and say, you know, what we thought was going to be a good pathway forward and a moneymaker for us fizzled out. Now we have to redo this whole process again.
Yeah.
If you don't have a crystal ball, you're just trying to help, but.
Tom, I think that Matt's got a list in mind. Why don't you share that?
Yeah, I mean, I think if I had to highlight the major items, it would be a conversation around uses first. I believe hospitality is permitted with a conditional use permit already. But the types of uses that function well in these environments today, obviously, entertainment-type uses that we would want to confirm are either permitted today or we should include some sort of exception for residential. At the end of the day, I think is one of the most logical uses for this site and for mall sites across the country. And I think the most, I would say, in addition to uses, I think we should evaluate parking. Most, your parking ratio is not as excessive as I have seen in the past, but parking ratios today, the, you know, the need for parking isn't what it was 30 years ago. And I think it would be wise to have a conversation about what the parking needs at the center are today and maybe create levers that allow some form of shared parking. There is a trend in the industry to do away with parking ratios and requirements altogether, putting the onus on the developer to provide evidence or support for the number of parking spaces that they need. But I think that that can be accomplished several different ways. The other thing that comes to mind, and I can circle back with an email, so you have something in writing, is building height. You know, multifamily development, ideally, sort of garden walk-up style, which is just traditional buildings with surface parking and maybe some exterior garages, is most efficient at four stories. The height limitation today is 42 feet. And in my experience, I don't know how the Town of Berlin measures that. But generally, you want to be in the 55 to 60-foot range, especially if you're doing peak roofs. So those are the three items I would say are closest to me. It's not the extent of everything. Like, if you want to get really granular, zero lot line setbacks on the interior of the site, I think it's beneficial. So I think there's a lot of different things, but those are the handful I would pick out.
Okay. Well, so this is the way I look at it. If you come at us and say, well, we want a multi-res building in there, then that's a different discussion versus we want to use it for a church or aquatic center or a pickleball court or something like that. You know, so I think that if the, you know, the, whatever your target use is or your target change is going to inform us for what the appropriate height is. Because, you know, at a multi-res, you're going to be wanting to be five stories at a minimum, I would think. Something along those lines.
It's a complicated industry. It's a byproduct of rates and costs right now. But same with.
Forty-two feet's not going to do it.
Forty-two feet is not sufficient enough to go four stories typically. And same with hospitality. Now hospitality is typically at flat roofs. So, right? And again, it just depends, depends on how you measure height.
Right. So we've had preliminary discussion with some people. We had a forum for housing earlier in the year. And one of the things that people were amenable to was housing over in that area. So that may be a logical way to go, pathway forward, something that you guys can say, yeah, we can get behind and something the citizenry can get behind. Because at the end of the day, if we say, okay, we want to do X, Y, and Z, that you've convinced the Planning Board, you got to go before the town to get a two-thirds vote, that's a high bar. And we want to make sure that it's not wasting everybody's time.
Yeah, but one of the advantages of building residential is that you're always going to find a way to replace the sea of impervious surface, right? So that's one thing to consider, and I think one, one thing we can promote through this process is that you're adding additional green space whenever you redevelop the sites today, and in particular with residential. You know, things that we had had conversations about internally that we wanted to be prepared to answer, besides parking, were, was related to height and whether or not a line of site study would be appropriate from some of the surrounding residential areas. We talked about the acoustical component. I think in, in general, residential hospitality is likely going to be quieter than the commercial use because you don't have the loading docks when the delivery is happening in early mornings. There's one other thing, Tim, I don't know if you remember. It's traffic, line of sight, acoustic, that might have been it. I think those are the three that came to mind.
Those are the keys, you know. Can you speak to the Sears component and how you see that playing out over time?
In terms of what I think is the best path forward to redevelop that site?
Yeah, I mean, I think everybody probably knows, but everybody might not know that Sears is independent of what's, what New England Development first generated. I mean, the pads for Sears, Pennies, and Macy's are independent. They're owned by those entities. And as Sears closes or is closed, they own that pad independent of you folks, right?
That's correct. Part of the exercise, not just with Solomon Pond Mall, but at all the properties that where the opportunity exists, is to try and make these properties more viable and more attractive to outside investors, developers, you know, general partners, et cetera. And so, you know, we feel like if we take a proactive position in amending the district or in some instances, creating a new district, that the appeal to develop on those, like separately assessed vacant parcels increases significantly. And I'll give you an example. So I worked at Pyramid Management Group for 10 years. Tim has some experience with Pyramid. And we, at the time, owned and operated Kingston Collection in Kingston, Massachusetts. Similar situation, Solomon Pond Mall is in much better financial condition than Kingston was at the time. But Sears owned their parcel and they vacated. We created the overlay district. We, and in doing so, the marketing and the PR surrounded by that process attracted numerous residential developers to the site. We were able to make a deal simply because we stepped through that process because one of the analysts read an article in the newspaper, called us and said, hey, we'd like to develop residential at Kingston Collection. So it's Trammell Crowe, they have a Boston office. They built 282 units on the property. We ended up selling them the 6.5 acres. So we owned it, but it was vacant. Sears had left. It was on a lease. We subdivided the parcel, sold them the land. So I think there's, there's a possibility that you can generate interest in the site for other uses just by stepping through that process because those developers know that the town is supportive because they've demonstrated that by agreeing to these changes in the district and that hopefully the process will be, will be easier at the end of the day. I think that the Sears site and while we don't have ownership in it, you know, there are uses that are ideal for it, residential being one of them, hospitality likely being the other. But I think we want to do what we can as operators and managers of the mall to help generate interest in that parcel and hopefully make the property as a whole more sustainable long term. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that's helpful.
Anything else, guys?
Matt, do you know what the vacancy rate for multifamilies now is in Massachusetts?
I don't have the answer to that. In certain markets that we operate, it's around 5%.
Yeah.
I suspect that like most, Massachusetts has a housing problem or shortage, and that it's probably in the ballpark of that, but I wouldn't quote that.
I just feel like it's changing rather rapidly. I've been watching what's going on in Texas, where they're getting over 10% now because they've overbuilt.
Yeah.
It's going to spread up here or it's just a completely different environment?
The project in Kingston is on fire. And I talked to the Managing Director there a few weeks ago. He's got enough on his plate, but had indicated that he thought the Marlboro, Berlin area was an attractive place to build because of its proximity to the highways.
Rentals, right? Is rentals or condos?
Rentals, rentals. I don't disagree with your comment. I think there's a, there's probably two trains of thought. One is that there's an undersupply of housing and the other, the other perspective would be, well, what does it look like in 20, 30 years? When you build all this housing? But I think that, and we actually did a study, probably in like 2017, 2018, and I talked to this firm a few weeks ago. The name of the company is called RCL CEO. And they are a sort of a market advisory and consulting firm that also handle, I would say, real estate feasibility. And we had used them to analyze the feasibility of the Kingston market along with some other markets that Pyramid has shopping centers in. And there, they had pulled some case studies, and I believe it holds true even more so today. Although some of that, some of this, some of what I'm sharing is anecdotal. Market rents at properties that were incorporated into the shopping center or immediately adjacent to were sometimes higher, oftentimes higher than the rest of the market. And I don't share that because I think that rents will be very high here. I share that. rents will be very high here. I share that because I believe that um these retail adjacent properties are more attractive to residents long term.
I don't know.
Okay. Most of these sites have the amenities that a younger demographic would be looking for, right? Maybe there's a target at the shopping center, so they can go grocery shopping.
Grocery components could be big, big one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So it's, it just, I think it depends on the demographic, but some of the amenities that the shopping centers generally have are appealing to certain residents.
The thing that I would be, and I don't know, we, we probably put language in there to, to limit this is how much of those rental units become available for short term for people that are doing hockey tournaments up the street.
Right, like Airbnb's.
Mm-hmm. Exactly.
Has, has the state of Massachusetts or maybe Boston moved in a direction to limit something like that? Because I know other larger cities have.
Some, they're working on it. They don't have anything in place yet.
And, and we're working with the Regional Planning Commission on um, an evaluation of the impact of short-term rental on the general market. And as a result, they're they've given us some recommendations. I think there'll probably be some more forthcoming that, that might be included in a warrant article for the annual town meeting, just to keep us up to date with what the industry needs and to protect those uh rental units that we've got. So they don't, or a large number get impacted and disappear.
Uh, you know, my, my perception is that the short-term rental industry is one of the reasons for the rapid increase in single-family home prices. Because investors are competing with families for homes.
So not to get too hung up on the housing, because I know there are other things that could happen over there. Um, but I, I would be interested in knowing how um, a big apartment complex, I know Trammell and Crow doesn't build small things. So it would be several hundred, wa- is kind of what we would be talking about. And um, I would be interested in knowing how that might affect the neighboring apartment complex. And um, you know, number of bedrooms would, are, are you looking at mostly one, two-bedroom studios, you know, it, it, especially with a of what we feel in Berlin is a large apartment complex right on the parcel next door. Um, something like what Trammell and Crow might suggest. Um would be challenging. I think to get past, because there's a lot of people who are still upset at the size of River Bridge. So that, that's just something to keep in mind, you know, that if, if there's a way to go the hospitality route. If you're weighing hospitality or three hundred apartments, I'd go the hospitality route. Um, three hundred apartments is ten percent of the population of the town, just so you have some sort of idea of what you're looking at. Actually, more if there's two people per unit, per apartment.
Yeah, I think that there, we would be open to, you know, discussing maybe limitations around that. In uh, in Kingston, we limited the number of three bedrooms. Uh, in other municipalities, uh, I've seen, you know, restrictions on limitations on the number of bathrooms, the number of kitchens even to a degree that you could have as a unit, as weird as that sounds. Um, so I think that there are ways that we could probably navigate it. I do tend to agree that in my experience, there is a minimum threshold of units that allow a project to be profitable enough to be attractive to a developer. And that's typically gonna be in that two hundred, two hundred and fifty unit range. Now, my data is a few years old at this point. Uh, I believe that still holds true. Um hospitality is a really unique use. It's um typically I think in this, in this location with the rink that you guys mentioned nearby, I don't remember off the top of my head, but I think Liz may have shared some visitation statistics with me. Obviously, hospitality would be a good use here. Um, you're trying to balance the expectation of the community, maybe to a degree with the profitability of what actually functions well in an environment. Uh, hotels as as, as unique as they are, sometimes are very difficult to operate profitably. Now, a lot of people do it, they do it well. We wouldn't do that, right? That's not our expertise. Our expertise is retail, retail management. We believe that you know, Solomon Pond Ball is a retail center, has a long-term home. In this community, maybe just not as big, as big as it is, but we'd like to help sort of shepherd um, ownership through that process.
Matt, how does um indoor sports, where, where does that rank in the in the uh scale of attractive tenants? Is that down at the bottom with the
It depends on your definition, sorry.
Right.
It depends on your definition of indoor sports. There's a, a craze sweeping the country called pickleball. And uh, um, there are actually a lot of really cool indoor pickleball uses that are being incorporated into malls. Um, we've had dialogue with those types of users in various centers, including Kingston, actually very recently. Um if you would, if you consider like, you know, bowling and bowling related activities, I think that qualifies. I would not, I would, I would rank it, I would rank like turf-related sports, we'll say like indoor soccer, football, flag football, whatever the sport, probably at the very bottom of the list. It's, I, I, I've worked with some developers who, and, and have known some individuals who are in that space, and that's a, that's a breakthrough business. Now, I'm okay leasing this space to somebody. I said, I'm okay leasing, I'm okay leasing to somebody else and letting them figure it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, what about like an indoor aquatic center? I've had more than one person mention that that would be amazing. And then you could take advantage of the visitors at the, that are visiting from the rink, who are looking for something to do.
What do you, you mean like a competitive pool?
Not even a competitive pool, just so like the, the hockey rink. I mean, there, I, they've got what, twelve rings over there now? Um, you know, so they have the lease time to um
Sure, yeah.
To, to leagues, they lease time to, we've had Olympic skaters train over there. And then they also host a lot of tournaments of different age groups. Um, but something you know, where there would be the ability for competitive swimming, but also for you know, day passes on the weekends to just go and hang out at, at an indoor pool or um
I would think a hotel in an Apex.
Yeah, I was just so
Right.
Yeah, so I, I made it, I made a note here. Uh, aquatic centers on their own are very expensive to build.
Sure.
But what, what came to mind was all of the uses that would appeal to the families and guests that are visiting the ice rink. What does that look like? I think Apex obviously is on the top of that list. What are the destinations that families can go to? I like the idea of the pool and sort of related um, tenants, spaces.
Yeah.
Someone was telling me about a new enormous sports complex that had a whole variety of sports in it. There was a new enormous building specifically built for that purpose.
In Massachusetts?
But it was down the south shore somewhere.
Hmm.
Which was interesting because, you know, if it's, it's not a conversion, right? So they must have a business model with it strong enough that they can afford to put up a huge building and parking and all the things that goes with it.
Yeah.
Based on the indoor sports. And apparently, it, it was loaded with people.
Yeah.
Interesting for us because we've got something that's a little unusual, which is the hockey rinks down there that are doing really well. And then all the hotels locally that um benefit from that.
There's one in Pittsburgh called Game On that has a lot of the indoor um sporting, you know, everything from basketball to volleyball, the pickleball, tennis, all the indoor court games, and then they have outdoor soccer and all that, but you know, axe throwing, like all of it. It's in, it's just down the street from me. Um, it's called Game On. But I don't know if that's the same one you're, you know.
No, this one was all indoors. Yeah, I know, I know about that one. This one was even a lot more elaborate and upscale, because it had food and all sorts of things in it. I, I'm really, you know, it's a new model, I think.
Certainly not opposed to the idea, uh, not our, not our expertise though, unfortunately. So hard for me to answer questions, I think, in this forum.
Yeah.
Matt, do you have in mind uh this list that you'd like to put forward as several zoning options? Or are you gonna suggest one?
I think we would try to uh limit uh our requests to an amendment of the existing district.
Right. To, to one use, to more than one?
Uh, uh, uses that we, I, I think there would be more than one use that we would, we would present. I would have to spend some more time on it, but I know that those conversations have happened in the past as well.
Right. So maybe get the sound, get the feedback from the planning board as to how they feel about that and which ones they feel would be winners and which ones they feel would be perhaps losers.
Well, even, even if it's indoor sports is not your expertise, but you'd still be interested in leasing to someone.
Right, so there's a place, there's a place in Rhode Island, they have a location in Smithfield, Rhode Island, North Smithfield, Rhode Island, North Kingston and Montville, Connecticut. And it's called, ready for this creative name? Indoor, we're Wide World of Indoor Sports. Can't get much
Wonder what it is.
Right? And I know that there's a bunch of people in town who would love uh disc golf also.
Sorry, I'm looking at pictures.
Yep.
Well, I think this is, this is what I would suggest, and other members can you know, chime in or amend this. But I think that uh, if you go back and talk to your, um, the people that you have to report to, uh, I think that there is uh, general support on this board that we're open to uh, different ideas. Ideas that are gonna make the mall viable in the future. Um, and that we're willing to work with you guys. Um, depending, like I said, you know, before, if it's something really outlandish, crazy, we may have, you know, some reservation about it. Uh, but I think in general, the stuff we've talked about tonight and some of the ideas that we spitballed, we are, you know, um general supportive of those type of activities. Um, and then I think it would be wise if you come back to us in our next meeting, because time is short. So if you come back to us in the next meeting and say you had favorable conversations with the people you report to, or they wanna do something completely different that is, you know, not, nothing that we talked about here, we get a sense of where we, we, how we go forward.
Okay.
And then from that point, then we can map out, okay, if you really wanna hit a, 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 a May town meeting, we have some homework, we have things we have to do. Um, I, my sense is that we probably would have more uh, consensus around my board or our board uh for, if we needed an extra meeting in January versus something in December. Right now, in December, we meet once. Um, but we've had, you know, cases in the past where we've felt that strongly that, you know, we need an extra meeting or two to, to, to get something through or get something hammered out. I think that's, people are willing to do that. I don't see anybody shaking. Hold on, Peter. Mr. Wheeler has something that he would like to
No, just in regard to the, the question about how to approach town meeting, it, I, I agree that you, you know, one article that tries to incorporate the modifications to the zoning overlay is the most appropriate. Just, it's far less complex. Um, it'll, there'll be significant detail, but um, I think it's far easier to go that route than to try to throw on multiple layers with multiple articles. There may very well be a separate modification to some language in the development agreement. Um, but you know, that's that's not a zoning modification, that's a majority vote. So um, you know, that that, that might be the reason that there'd be two articles as opposed to one, but uh, I wouldn't go any further than that.
Okay, Peter, I'm sorry, I cut you off.
No worries. So do you think it makes sense, Tom, to quickly outline for Matt the steps? Next meeting, you've already outlined, and the, the fact that you're gonna have to have a public hearing, and you want to just outline that for Matt, so he knows what he's up against time-wise and steps-wise?
So we would have to see, um, you know, an outline of what you wanna do. We would have to have, I mean, we can have um, I dare say we should, you know, we'd have to have something substantial enough to be able to put it on the warrant. It doesn't have to have all the language hammered out. And then public hearings, uh, we could have between the time the warrant closes until the time the town meeting happens. Um, you know, the, the planning board would have to have a vote, and then we'd make a recommendation at town meeting. Um, you know, before the citizenry, before the, before the uh, you know, the, the motion was read. Or the motion's read, and then we make our recommendations. Um, and then discussion on the town floor, and then a vote. Um, is there something else, Peter, that you were thinking, or is that kind of a good enough outline?
I think, I think, I think that covers it. I, I'm not an expert, that's why I suggested you do it.
Yeah.
How many public hearings?
One.
But I, I would think it would be appropriate for us to host um, and perhaps get some, I mean, if, if we were to host a forum um you know, prior to a public hearing.
Right.
In fact, yeah, whatever we could do to get some increased response from the public, maybe it's just our notifying the other boards in town that we're gonna be talking about this in more detail in January and that their participation be welcome. I mean, you look tonight, we've got people from Housing Partnership and from uh, ZBA and Conservation. Um, we've got Realtors, we've got, we've got some good people in the audience that if they can spread the word that this is an issue that's um, gonna probably be presented at town meeting in May, then, then we can probably get greater participation in a in some of the discussion in January, which would help us.
Matt, the forum that Tim is referring to is very informal.
Public hearing will be
Yeah.
So I think that's the uh high-level outline, but I think that, you know, if, if you could come back, what's our next meeting? It's in December
Twelfth.
Twelfth, I think.
Yeah, if you could come back on the twelfth and just give us an update of, you know, whether it's your side can react that fast and, and, and you think that, that we can, you know, there's a pathway forward and this is kind of like, you know, where we wanna start the process going. I think that, at that I think that at that point, we can give you more an informed opinion, we can start laying out some timelines and things like that to accomplish the, the goal that you want.
I know Matt's worried about budget, his leadership is worried about budget. What studies would you think they may uh the board might require?
I think that would depend on what they're recommending.
Yeah.
You know, if you're, if you're recommending three hundred houses, that's good, or apartments, that's gonna require a lot more studies than a hotel and a sports complex.
But there's gonna be some traffic studies, they're gonna want some, some noise, you know, some support documents. We've talked about some of them. Um, you're gonna wind up, it depends on how, I mean, if we wanted to gut the, the uh the overlay and, and, and do a lot of that, then you're gonna have consultants on, on that that are gonna wanna chime in for or protect us or uh for some of the stuff that, that, or review, let's say peer review, some of the stuff that you're, you're suggesting. I mean, if it's some, some simple modification, if it's one thing, if it's a complete gut and redo, then that's gonna be something else. So I, I think it's gonna depend on how extensive the, the changes are gonna be.
You have a town attorney that will navigate that process?
We do have town council.
Is uh the, the, the fee for town council expected to be borne by us?
Yeah.
Your fees? Are there application fees that I should be aware of for this amendment?
Hmm. No, I don't think so. I wouldn't, I can't, I, I wouldn't think so at this point.
It will be probably nominal in comparison to what an attorney would charge if there were.
Yeah, for sure.
Well, I have plenty of information, um, plenty of work to do. I appreciate the time that you guys have given us this evening. Is there anything else that you wanted to raise while we're together?
At this point, I don't think so.
Okay. I'm all set then.
Okay, thank you, thank you for informing us and your presentation.
Appreciate the time, guys. Take care.
No problem. Goodbye, Liz.
Good night.
Thank you, Peter.
All right, I'm gonna jump. Have a good night.
Okay, we've uh kinda blown our uh agenda. Uh.
Actually, the um attendees for the sign portion are not available tonight. They wanna come to the next meeting.
Oh.
Perfectly.
Here I was sweating.
I should have told you. I didn't say I didn't read it till we started.
That's fine, no problem. And so we do have a little bit of time before eight thirty discussion.
Three minutes.
Three minutes, excellent. We've gained three minutes of our lives. So does that seem like a reasonable pathway forward? I mean, I, I, I did a lot of talking for everybody and, and no one was like gesturing, violating in the background, so I thought that was okay.
No, you were fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we can't, we can't guide them on some of the specific things he was asking about until we know what they're asking for.
That's right, that's right.
I do feel like there's a fairly significant number of people in town who still um are not thrilled about having the two hundred and four units we already built here.
Mm-hmm.
Which would make an even larger one.
Is that a function?
More challenging.
That, is that a function of the developers that developed it, or is that a function of they don't like additional housing units in town?
I, I think it just seems overwhelming for such a small town.
Well, I mean, the, the important thing that we always have to remember is that the first proposal for the flats was for thirty to thirty-five single-family homes.
Yep.
Fill in all the land, no open space. The, the second proposal, um, you know, involved the CCRC, which they couldn't find a tenant for.
No, no, in between, there was a huge retail.
That's right, yeah.
Can you imagine what the retail looked like? Oh, my gosh. I mean, it was intense retail.
Well, no, but Tim, Tim, I don't, you know, I think we all understand the benefit of it, and there's a lot of benefit, and many people in town understand that, but I just, I just hear so often, um, the people don't, don't haven't, haven't learned the benefits of it.
Well, that's why I think we continue to articulate the fact that with those eighty-two affordable units, twenty-one of which are really affordable, we jump up to sixteen percent affordability, and we don't have to face any forty Bs that we don't choose to have anymore.
I think over time, people will get that, but then when you come back with another one even larger, we don't have that benefit because you're already at ten percent.
Right.
And that close.
But we did talk about this at the forum.
Yes.
And when we said, you know, additional housing, and we talked about this is a possible site. Um, people weren't as adverse as I might, I mean, I think people said, oh, that's something that we should talk about. I think you're right, Carolyn, you know, two hundred and fifty to three hundred units is off the scale, and if if they can't do it for under two hundred units because the efficiency of scale and cost isn't there, then you're right. I mean, it probably isn't a component of this project. They need to think about other options. Um, but that's the question for them is, can you come in with, you know, a lesser number of total units? Because if we look at the apartment units that we've got, the impact on the schools is less than we anticipated, and the tax generation is significant. You know, so, you know, we.
And the other thing you gotta realize is location, because it's on the periphery of the town. It's not like you're putting it, you know, in the downtown area or on, you know, Highland, Island Road or, or, or Highland Ave, Highland Street, um, or something along those lines. You know, it's, it's, it's not as visible in your face um, as some other places could be, and you already have intense development there anyways. You're just reconfiguring the utilization.
Yeah, I, I just think, you know, it, I just think another project that scale that close is not the, but it certainly wouldn't be my choice, first choice. Probably wouldn't even be my tenth choice.
Well, we can talk.
It doesn't sound like they're prepared to really drill into the sports complex idea. I mean, it may be a.
Yeah, I was surprised at that.
Yeah, well, they just don't do it, right? But it, it's just interesting that you start to see, I mean, the, the two trends that I've seen recently are starting in Texas, this massive amount of building of multifamily rentals is starting to cause a problem, like they're over ten percent vacancy now. Because they just built so many of them. And the other trend is only a few examples of it, but these sports complexes that are, I guess there, there have been some in the past. Yes, but I think the, the one, the new ones are, are a scale that I don't know if anybody's ever built before, and they're working.
Right. For now.
Right.
Right. Well, this isn't just pickleball, this is.
Sure, but malls were working twenty years ago.
This may be the new model of what works in a huge building like that, I don't know. It just seems like, it, I mean, it'd be good to encourage them to really explore that and find out whether it's an option or not, particularly where we've got the model of the hockey rinks that's working right near Boston, right? That's a little bit unusual for our town to be close to something like that, and the Apex, Apex, which seems to be working too.
That's why I was thinking, I mean, why drive to the Apex if you could put a hotel with the Apex attached to it? I mean, I would think that that would be like a no-brainer, but.
Yeah.
Agreed. Eight thirty-three.
Eight thirty-three, okay, let's go, can we switch gears to our discussion of the starter work, senior housing?
Sure, so Mark. Uh, Seth is here.
Okay, can I open up one topic among us first? Ladies.
What did you say?
Can I introduce one topic before we um?
Sure.
Have the guest speak?
Sure.
So I've been kinda pushing this idea around everybody I meet in Berlin. I'm hoping you guys are too and getting some input and um uh, one thing I hadn't, I just hadn't thought about was we arbitrarily picked a number of thirty-five units, which is what I modeled also, just because that was the number we had. But um, I'm getting some opinions that's, maybe that's too many, especially if, if there's likely to be kids going into school, because that's one of our audiences, right? And I'm wondering whether um, it just seems like we should have some discussion about how many units is uh likely to make not only the developers, but also the voters. Where, where's the happy medium between what the developer would like to build and what the townspeople would like, and also would we consider a mix of some larger single families in the, on the same property to make it more attractive to a developer?
Um, do we know what the population in the school is now? Are we underutilized or are we at capacity?
Uh, I was thinking we should invite someone from the school in actually, because I thought it was low. I thought we needed more students, but you know, that may not be true, and I've heard rumored that that's not true. So I, I think that's really important. And the other suggestion was to um to go through um the current housing inventory and get an idea of how many houses like the ones that we're suggesting to build actually exist, like what's the mix of sizes and bedrooms of houses already in town? Just as a reference point.
So Molly created a um a report in two thousand and eighteen, which I'll send around, and, and what it does is it breaks out units by their creation over the last, uh, well, eight, over the eighteen years prior to that, essentially. Um, but it, it also um, it, it broke it out in regard to um affordable units, condos, you know, all that sort of stuff, and and gave um the, the, the cost, um, size and all that, so let me send that around, and, and we could look at that and say, you know, if that could be enhanced with new data from the last five years, that would be spotted on to what we'd like to, to look at, to give us an idea.
Now, did that have the breakout of single families by bedrooms or something?
Yeah, that's my recollection, so I'll, I'll dig that up.
Right, so one thing, one thing that this project does, would do though, is keep the unit small. You know, the ranches and capes that are scattered around town can be bought by people and knocked down, made bigger, um, which this project would protect that from happening, from the small, from these houses. So that's just one, you know, one thing to keep in mind.
Right. I wonder how we would come to a um to a number and mix of houses that a developer is gonna be interested in, and the town is likely to vote for. Like, we really haven't talked about it yet, right?
True, we have, great. We happen to have a developer in the little square right below you, though.
Yeah. All right, well, just putting that on the table, we should.
We're ready to hear from. Okay, if you, uh, are they, are they all set or?
They're promoted, they just need to turn on their mics and cameras.
Excellent.
Good evening.
Hi Seth, how are you?
I'm doing well, how about you?
Good, thank you.
Uh, Mark appears to be on mute still, but um I can start off just kinda where we left off and give the board a quick brief of where we're at right now, if that's all right?
Sure, please do.
So um Jay was kind enough to give us a sketch kind of of his thoughts and some of the research that he had compiled. Uh, Mark had instructed me after that point just to take a look and see if uh we can fit in what the board kinda desired. Um, and at the end of the last meeting as well, some of the abutters were kind enough to give us some feedback, and a lot of that related to preserving the berm that's at the front of the site. Uh, so, so really what we wanted to figure out is, one, how big, um, mostly in how wide, how much area is that occupying? And so that we can make sure that, that Jay's sketch can kind of jive with, with everything that we're working with there. So we did um update our, our conceptual plan. I'm happy to share that with the board, if you'd like me to share my screen.
Sure.
I will do that briefly then. Okay, so hopefully what's before you is um the sketch of, of essentially what Jay did. And um the red line is our estimation of the limits of the existing berm that goes around the site. So these red lines at the front of the site, uh, we would intend to preserve those in their entirety. And the other thing we realized too is that the red line at the back of the site, um, it's pretty steep, severe embankment there, uh, it goes up to the abutting property, and we probably could not um, really develop that area of the site without significantly removing material or moving things around. Uh, so, so we're treating those the same. They're, they're essentially providing a, a continuous buffer to abutting properties. Uh, essentially very limited view of the project, and this is a similar layout to um, to Jay's sketch, where we have a centralized common park area, and then essentially pods of developable areas. We've schematically showed units in this area. It sounds like the board has a lot of considerations related to housing size and type that you're still working through. Uh, so this is just to show that what can fit there. Uh, by no means are we, we implying that we wanna do a duplex in a certain area or a single family's another. I think Mark's very open to that as you work through this process. Um, the other big change too is that we were able to condense things so that we are anticipating not having any units in the two hundred-foot riparian zone um to both the brook and, and, well, it's across the street, the Assavet River does impact our site as well. Uh, so that's a, that's a quick summary of where we're at. Um, if Mark wants to add anything, uh, please do.
Sure, the um, basically, uh, what Seth did is reeled everything in a little bit tighter than what uh staying to Jay's concept, which at the last meeting, uh, it seemed that everybody was in favor of that and liking the um liking that. Um, as far as your first question on what would uh work for a developer, uh, I started reviewing, reviewing some of the numbers, and uh, things can work, but um running the water is not prohibitive, it, it's just a little costly doing all of the, it's not just a pipe, it's all the individual services. So between the, the, the water, which also makes the project feasible, and between the length of the road, the infill structure is a little bit on the, the, the higher end, and the, the maximum units that the site could support would be uh forty-five. How many do you have on here, Seth?
So this is uh thirty-eight units total, so some of those are in the mix of a duplex.
Yeah, Seth just finished this up, uh, not too long ago. We had met yesterday and he wrapped it up for the meeting tonight. But that could be satisfied with either more duplexes or just adding a few more units. Um, so they could be the mix like you were talking about, you could have the uh whether they be thousand to twelve hundred square foot capes and ranches, so you have the ranches that could be for whether they're for uh retiring people, or whether they're for handicap people, or whether somebody who just wants first for a living. And then the capes just add a little bit of privacy for getting a bedroom upstairs. And then the duplexes are for somebody who wants. And then the duplexes are for somebody who wants uh, that style of living, they want, they want a duplex, they don't want a lot to deal with. The uh, and we could do uh, you know, seventeen hundred square foot. Um. Uh, homes with attached garages, the other thing is that um, as opposed to. The um, I know we have the capes and the ranches, but you could also throw a split entry into the works. That has a garage under and an unfinished slab and then they get the living space above. So. So we could get garages that way and and also. There was talk about uh, landscaping and privacy and the separate, the separate um, neighborhoods. The site itself is fairly fairly flat, so if we, if we. Yeah, we'd have to fill some of these areas uh, a bit. Uh, to generate areas to get garage unders. So with some, with with some filling of the site, we could generate topography that would add character. Also make it so we could get some garage unders, which would be cost effective and add some. I don't know what the right word is, but add a little bit more. Appeal as far as uh, the layout as far as the landscaping as opposed to just a a flat spot. Um, was with adding some terrain where right now the only difference in terrain other than the pile of fill that's in the middle. Is the um, the the berm which we're not going to touch. So to create some privacy, to create some environment and to create some individual neighborhood feel. Uh, by adding some topography outs- outside of the road, we we probably wouldn't hurt to add some to the road too. So we could control the drainage and direct the drainage into the areas that need be. Um, I think might help. And and then Seth also, what he, what he also did here is he, he cleaned up the plan. To uh, satisfy all of the uh, fire department radiuses on all the intersections and the cul-de-sacs, which would be something that would come into play at a later date anyway.
I like it, and you pulled the houses out of the two hundred foot, good job.
Yes, that was, that was something that me and Seth both both talked about and there's, there's really no need to get favors or waivers. For something that can be avoidable.
I agree.
Where'd you put the septic part?
We would end up doing, uh, instead of doing individual septics, we would do the required amount of septics to stay under two thousand gallons. Every septic over two thousand gallons requires pressure dosing, which is not only an extra cost. But they're very difficult to install, um. I I've only done the one, it was like eight thousand gallons and uh, trying to get them to function properly. Is a chore, they have all different sized pipes, all different pressures and all different sized holes. And at the end of the day, the 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 affluent, the 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 sewage still goes into the ground. So if they kept under two thousand gallons, we're going to be under ten thousand gallons, so. We'd have five, we could have five systems, we could have ten systems, but the idea would be to get them in a close proximity. To the, to each. Neighborhood, I guess I'd say, so therefore that limits the amount of pipe. Like the the far left where it approaches, the far left rear where it approaches the ledge where they filled for years. Because they had blasted and mined and they got in trouble and and the the they filled it in to be within the requirements of uh, the safe requirements. Um, that's all fill underneath it is eventually ledged, so that particular site. Would um, have to go down further on the site to where the soil exists. So I I've tested on the site and I would, it's safe to say that three quarters of the site is still original and still good sand. And still good gravel, so the septics could be, could be put in areas where they don't impact the dwellings, they don't impact the um. The the the, I wouldn't really call them, they could be walking trails, hiking trails, bike trails, whatever. Um, but we could, then there's no, no groundwater that I encountered, so they could be placed fully underground. And if anything that can be done, uh, gravity reduces the amount of vents that are required. So things could be tasteful for the landscaping and then of course any vents that are needed, you you can run them. Further out of sight and out of the way, so things look good. So the answer is we have adequate area for the systems, have we located the the areas at this point? No, but um. And I myself and I'm sure Seth is fully confident that we can place them in this footprint without. Getting into the buffer. Uh, border or or getting into any areas where they would cause issue.
We we would anticipate each neighborhood unit having its own system. So there'd be several systems on the site, um, but each grouping of houses would all flow to one system.
I think the book calls them pocket, pocket neighborhoods or pocket something.
Pots, yeah, pocket neighborhood, whatever, whatever you'd like.
There's, there's some word that they're using, I have a phrase for it, yeah.
Tom, when you're ready, we do have a hand up in the audience. Um, I do have a question though, um. What is the average amount of distance between the houses?
I mean, the closest on this plan would be twenty feet, the twenty feet is a dimension that comes in twice here. We placed all units a minimum of twenty feet off of the road. Um, in theory, that would allow a regular sized car to be able to park in front of the house without blocking the road that way. Uh, so that would be a unit that doesn't have a garage, they would have adequate driveway spaces as well. And then some of the units would be as close as twenty feet apart, um, they certainly could be more if the board would like. Uh, if anything, this, this is not like a maximum density type of drawing for this site, um. We are using about eighteen acres of area. Um, for that, that would be the the white area on this plan. And that does not include the centralized park areas. Or or excuse me, that does include the area for the centralized park area, which is over three acres. Um, and so it's a twenty nine acre site, so we're using approximately half of it. So there, there's a lot more room that we could either spread out or put more units in, bigger units, whatever the board desired.
The park area, the park area after completion, essentially, you know, you could turn that that light green. As far on its completion, as far as, which would reduce the amount of developed area, consider it more like open space.
And do you have the percentage of developed area?
Uh, we're just over fifty percent and really the con- the concept here would be. If the board were to come forward with a number, whether it's through the overlay district or however this evolves. Um, we would adjust to meet that, there, there's plenty of flexibility in that.
One thing I noticed in this design, the uh, the only abutters to the left would be the ones. That uh, would be somewhat impacted, but by leaving the existing border, the existing border. And the green area there next to it, um. The impact of visibility, I would imagine, would pretty much be nil. Or none.
Yeah, you, you can see one house from the open area, but looks like you could put some trees in maybe.
Right, right on the top.
Yeah.
Which the gentleman who lived there, I think he may have already moved, but when I did the test holes for Venakasa, we walked around with him and he goes. He goes, I I work construction for a living and I'm not a hypocrite, so I don't care if he developed the place, he goes, but chances are I'd probably move. But I think he already moved.
Okay, anybody else from the board have any comments? Can we um, hear from the member that had their hand up?
Yep.
Please.
Michael, Michael Harding.
Hi, good evening, everybody, um. Yes, thank you very much for this new plan, Mr. Rhodes, I'm very relieved to see that the berm is indeed protected, that was of course. Something we were all eager to see. Um, my wife at the last meeting raised a question and I don't think anyone has got back to her, she's currently away. Uh, she was concerned that the, our current water supply is i- is fed by an aquifer. And most of us on River Road, not all of us, are actually on our own wells. And what we're concerned about, of course, is the leaching from these various leach fields, sewage systems into the aquifer. Has consideration been made for that?
The um, the, as far, the George Russ, one thing to begin with, we're drawing off of the water supply that's already. Established across the street, so we're not going to be tapping into the aquifer at all. And the, the system.
I'm sorry.
Excuse me?
Yeah, go ahead, please, sorry.
And the uh, the systems are well within Title Five as far as what would be a, you know, what's allowable. I would, I would divert it. I would have Seth answer that question, but we're, we're within the state guidelines and the amount of gravel. That is required to to treat sewage, uh, the state determined it was two feet, so they doubled it to four feet. And Berlin made that to five feet and all of this material is naturally occurring. So if you go through thirty, forty, fifty feet of gravel, the amount of treatment is is immense. The amount of treatment is, uh, after it goes through. Four or five feet, it's safe to go into the groundwater, so the impact to the aquifer uh, is somewhat. Non, it is basically non-existent because the aquifer is inside of the rock. The aqua, when you drill your wells, they, you go down four hundred feet, six hundred feet, eight hundred feet. The distance that we're above it and the amount of gravel that we're going through, this is probably the, one of the best sites in the state. As far as. Um, quality of sewage, quality of water.
Okay, thanks for that, yes, I was aware, obviously you were expecting to draw a pipeline in from, as you've explained, the other site.
Sure.
Um, I had no idea, um, that's very relieving to hear, because obviously I, I think our particular well is probably a good hundred and fifty feet deep. So if that's the case, thank you for that, thank you for that information.
Good, thank you, yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other? Comments or questions? Mr. Wheeler.
So in regard to Jay's earlier question, um, you know, we're. I I've, I guess I'd suggest that we, we get the commission to come and present to us the draft. Um, bylaw that they've been working on to to give us some counterpoint anyway, and then. The, what 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 will happen essentially is we'll, we'll put together a model overlay bylaw, that'll be. Presented at a town meeting. Um, the number of units that would be allowed in that bylaw could certainly be on a sliding scale. And then as a proponent would come forward with a project. You know, they'd be proposing a certain number of units and the town then would have the opportunity to say. No, on that site, that's more units than we think is appropriate and we won't pass it as a. As a project utilizing the overlay district that we've created as a general part of the bylaw. Or if they felt that it was the correct number of units, they'd, they'd pass it, so. It, we're, we were allowed that ability to go to town meeting and let the proponent. Argue their case and then the townsfolk can decide whether it's appropriate or not. So the 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 template that we create has that capacity to be elastic enough, so. You know, it can accommodate a a range of num- you know, number of units and as a result. Be applied to certain parcels and get successful results at town meeting, I mean, I guess that's the way I'd look at it.
Right, uh, Tom, we do have two more audience members with their hands up when you're, again, when you're ready.
Yep, um. Does anybody have any reaction or comment to Tim's?
Idea. Well, I, I mean, I guess I would ask. Mark, maybe, um, I mean, how, did you, how did, how did you come up with thirty eight units? Is that?
Well, we had, we originally had thirty six, but that was building out the whole entire site. And um, everybody works better under pressure, so Seth just finished this up today. And uh, I did a little bit of math today as well and um. The. Forty five would be the. The magic number as far as um, interest rates are higher now. Costs are going to continue to climb and for things to be feasible, that that seemed like. Well, before, before this, this piece of land was earmarked for sixty six units and that was a moneymaker. Uh, that was a guaranteed moneymaker, had it gone through, so the more units you drift from that. Um, the harder it is to to make, make it, make it work, so. I agree with Tim as far as, and I, if I understand it, if you create the overlay. Every project has to go for their overlay, so there may be other projects in town that go for ten units. Over twelve units and that's what the site allows, so in the. Design of, not the design, in the writing of the warrant for the overlay. The board puts stipulations on, like Seth said, we're under fifty percent of the properties being developed, you know. That might be something that you use as a model, um. Bedroom size, um, this will fall under, even though it's an overlay, it's still. I believe technically falls under the condo statute, I'm not positive, but it's um, the land is. Owned by the association and the units are owned by the. People that own them, I believe the detached, we could do. Use easements so they could maintain their own area, I'm not sure about the duplexes, the duplexes are people that usually want. Everything provided for them, so there's a little bit of a hurdle there in the association as far as fees are concerned. Because you're going to have the road to maintain and you're going to have the sides of the road to maintain and. And then what you do with the the units themselves, do, is it, is it, is it all maintained by the association, that might be the way to go. Uh, that, but those are just some logistics, they're not really anything that you guys have to worry about, that's what I have to worry about as a developer. And how it's uh, sold, deeded and maintained for the future. Uh, that's one of the only thing I see between the uh, the duplexes and the and the single families. But I do think it's a a very good mix of the the smaller homes, the ranches and I think the splits could work as well. Uh, maybe, maybe uh, change the capes to split, so do a mix of all three. And then the duplexes and then the the um. The smaller single family home style, which would give you a a wide mix of of uh, of homes to offer that would. Stay in perpetuity, that's a very han- fancy word that everybody likes, um, and then limit. Basically, I would, I don't see where you would have a need for any additions, you basically would would freeze the size of the homes. Other than. Uh, if we're able to, if, if cost wise and market wise, we're able to do. Basements for everything, then the only thing that would expand would be finished basements. But I think it would be a good mix, like Carolyn said, that uh. It can't be torn down, a bigger house can't be built on it, like, you know, like Soy Hill thirty nine, they're tearing down the house. Building a big house up behind it, um, there's no roof raises. These, these are, these are homes that people will move into and move out of and other people will move into and move out of and there'll, there'll be a permanent. Um, permanent Berlin housing of of that size.
Okay, anybody else have a comment? The um, can you, I don't know who was first.
Yep. So well, we're down to one now. So. Mike?
Hi, thank you.
Hi, Mike.
So I am the new immediate uh, left side of butter. I was never, I was never informed by the outgoing seller that he had known about this project.
He didn't know about this project. He knew about a previous project that was not approved.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Okay, so. You know, we bought for privacy, but again, we'll see how this all goes. My question is. The access road, the emergency uh, access road that ties in, where does that tie into? Does that tie into our private driveway that we have that we share?
No, no, it would go, it would cut through Boundless Adventures parking lot. And then go down through the, the entrance of the driveway that you, that, that's actually a roadway. That uh, was meant for a forty B that never happened. And then your driveway access is off of that. Um, so it would come in through the entrance of that. And then go through Boundless Adventures parking lot. Through the berm there and then enter into the project. It would be strictly only for emergency use only. And uh, it would be gravel, uh, like Boundless Adventures is, is gravel and it would be gravel from there on out. The uh, the water line would come up the street and uh. We're more than likely we could keep that outside of the paving. I'd have to find out where the location of it is, but it's very limited impact.
So that would have an emergency gate on the, on the end of it. Because, because Boundless Adventure locks gates uh, every night as well.
Yeah, it would have an emergency gate and it would have to have a lock, a Knox box, uh, is what the fire department requires so they can get into it when needed. So you wouldn't have riffraff or, or anybody traveling through there.
Okay. And my last question, just because I'm the immediate left butter, what do you think the distances? Between my house and one of the first houses being built? On the left side from there. Are you looking at about a hundred feet plus?
Oh, it's, it would be a lot more than that, but I mean, we're, we're really in the preliminary stages of this where we're. Um, kind of listening to both your feedback, other abutters' feedbacks, board members' feedback and. Hoping that to formulate some framework that we have to fit this development within. So everything that's been put forward is, is strictly on a conceptual basis right now and, and for preliminary discussions only. So. We um, we would be very far from your property, though.
Okay. All right. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the, uh, there was no other hand, Carolyn?
No, I think um, same last name. So I think they were, both had the same question.
Got it. Okay, um.
Maybe we should discuss the same thing we talked about for the mall, which is what's the, what are the steps that need to get done to? If we're, if we're going to get something like this to town meeting.
So we, we need to generate language for, for an overlay that's generic, not specific, generic. And I guess I'd still suggest that. We, we begin that process by looking at if, if people have had a chance to review it, the. The language that Central Mass developed because I think it allows us to eliminate some of the topics that they've put forth in, in their. Their language and, and easily accept some others. Um, but that would give us the basis of a template and then. We could work forward from there with, you know, some public input and public and developers' input and. I've asked the commission if they would host a forum, um, perhaps in January that would. Bring together the five towns that have shown an interest in the cottage housing overlay or cottage housing zoning. And, and, and I asked that they include uh, some of the, the, the developers that have been building these within, you know, stones through of us. I mean. The Concord folks and the Devons and some of those just to get an idea from them as to what they've found successful and what the, the limits are for. Them as they've tried to fit into the cottage housing model. And they've said that they, they would try to do that. So. I mean, again, I think that would help us a little bit as well.
Tim, are those projects that have already happened or are they uh, preliminary projects that, that they have happened?
Riverwalk and Mill Run and Concord. There's another project in Carlisle by a similar builder. The. The Devon's site is uh, complete. Judy Bowman. Um, was living up there in the, in one of the Devon's projects. I'm not sure if it was one of the. The ones that they're talking about, but, but smaller scale units, smaller lots, um, you know, pods, that sort of thing. So. Similar to what you, you guys are looking at here.
Gotcha.
And the Riverwalk project has been around for over a decade and, and I think Mill Run now probably is uh, up and running. Devon's has been around for four or five years, I think.
At least, probably a little bit more than ten, ten, six years.
So that would be my take. I mean, I, I think we. We could start writing from scratch an overlay, but I think looking at some language that's already been generated might help us say. Well, you know, this section doesn't apply to us at all. And this makes perfect sense or we can modify some of the language, but some of the setbacks that Seth was talking about, I think, are included in that overlay and. Density, green area, all those sorts of things which.
Have we seen that preliminary?
Well, I thought I sent it around to everybody.
Yeah, I saw it. It was, it was pretty brief, though, as I remember.
It's about eight pages.
Oh, is it? Okay. And then the, we need all the text for defining how these things remain. As built, right?
Yeah, and they've got language like that in there and, and similar to what Mark was talking about. No accessory structures addition, no additions, no, you know, that's. Again, that's important and uh, I think that's language that's included in the overlay that they were working on. So.
Good.
It's always easier to cut and paste.
By far.
Yeah. Wonder if in your, in the forum, I wonder if the developers that come would be willing to share the, or maybe the towns would share. Their bylaw because that would be complete, right?
Yeah, I've looked at Concord's and uh. I didn't look at Devon's.
Oh, so it's available online or something?
Yeah, you can pull those out through their zoning.
Yeah. And then there's, there's site plan review afterwards, right? So that. Once, not only does Mark need to fit within the bylaw, but then there's a ongoing site review process.
Yeah, you've, you've got a, you don't have to get a special permit. You're basically coming in for, for site plan approval based on the fact that the town meeting has accepted the. The project is, is appropriate for that overlay district and they apply that overlay on the site that's being proposed.
The uh, one thing I want to comment on where Seth pointed out, the closest units are twenty feet apart. That's pretty much standard for the industry, but we also volunteer the information that we would voluntarily sprinkle the, sprinkle of the units. So therefore it satisfies the, the fire department and satisfies the fact that um, I think it's pretty far fetched for a, a fire to spread from unit to unit, but at least that takes that. Out of the equation.
Agreed.
Thank you.
So um, what's our, what's the next move? We want to have something that we can look at for the next meeting? In terms of the um, what the commission's done?
Yeah, I mean, if you want, I can reach out to them and ask them if they, I mean, they, they talked to Kristen. Rubin the other day. So that was Jane, Emily and Victoria. They've been working on it. So I could see if they had time on the twelfth. Is that what the date is?
Yes, yep.
Um, they, they presented this in about, uh, I think they used. Twenty minutes for the presentation and then they had, you know, ten minutes of conversation afterwards. So it was. Maybe a little more than half an hour. But I could see if they were available on the twelfth if you wanted.
Yeah, if you could.
Sure.
Because that way we can start working on the language and stuff like that. And I think Thomas had said last meeting that he'd be willing to work on some of the draft language. I know he's not here to reaffirm, but we'll volunteer him because he's not here.
Sounds good. I like it.
Any other comments or penetrating insights or questions? No?
No, we're making progress. It's good.
Making progress. Good. Okay. Is that, uh?
Can we leave it? Oh, sorry.
I was going to say Seth and Mark, will you guys be back next meeting to listen to what we've got for preliminary overlay language?
Sure.
Yeah, I was going to say the same. I thi, I think we'd like to kind of hear this get refined a little. And as it does, I, I anticipate that, that Mark and I will have to um, adjust whether it's unit layout, street layout, things like that, just to. Start adding some dimension and some real world numbers to these things as it, as it moves forward. So. We'll be, we'll be looking for that information and then hopefully be back before you with um, yet another revised plan.
Okay, good.
Be nice to hear what the um, proposed uh, guidelines would be for the, the uh, the bylaw and the overlay as well.
Yep. Okay, fantastic.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you. We'll see you soon.
Night.
Yeah. Night. Yeah.
Alrighty, um. That's everything on our agenda. Do we have anything else that we want to check?
He's raising his finger.
I see that. Mr. Wheeler.
So the, the commission has district local technical assistance funding available for um, next year and. One of the projects that a couple towns have utilized using D L T A money. Is a zoning diagnostic is what they call it and what. This uh, Jane Ro, Wycliffe, why? I forget her last name. Anyway, Jane from the commission has been doing this for a couple towns. She goes through their current zoning and identifies the inconsistencies and, and problems. Um. And then offers suggestions about, you know, how the town might go about correcting those at a, at a town meeting. And I just thought we're, we're at a stage where we've layered on. Pieces and pieces and there's inconsistencies that we know.
Yeah.
Um, so if, if you're interested, we can get a hold of an application for that and, and uh, we can talk. Maybe I could get. I was going to talk to Carrie um, Sawat today, but we didn't connect, but I was going to ask her if. Um. She felt we'd be a good candidate, but I, I think everybody at the commission would agree that. We're, we're doing a lot of things well in town and updating and. Just cleaning up our zoning would probably be a good project, especially if we can get someone else to pay for it. So.
Exactly.
If you want me to, I can ask around about that.
So I just. Back to what the house, the overlay. Um, does it make sense to contemplate a couple of market rate homes to have less density? And would that be more palatable?
What was our goal originally? Was our goal to foster smaller unit housing?
Well.
Trying to, we're trying to fill the niche.
Right.
We've always felt that the market rate units get created on their own and that. We've done a good job creating affordable units. And we've got a good mix now of co-housing, senior housing apartments. You know, but we, we don't have this. Block of housing that, you know, accommodates. Now, I think it's worth looking at. That, you know, do you get more? Units closer to five hundred thousand dollars if you allow three market rate units in a, in a thirty unit project? I mean, that's what Carolyn's asking and I guess.
Right, right. And again, trying to make it more palatable. Um, I'm not entirely sure how the twenty feet. Twenty foot distance is going to fly with a lot of people.
Well, but the, you don't, I mean, the, the point is. Somewhere, because you don't, if, if twenty feet is what's necessary to make the units affordable. Then you don't necessarily need to live there, but you could comprehend the notion that that's what drives. The, the lowering of cost, but if the model dictates that we add a few market rate units and that allows us to. Include a few more affordable units, truly big A affordable.
Right.
Um, then, you know, how do we look at that? So I mean, it's worth.
And yeah, I'm just throwing it out there, you know, a, as part of our conversation earlier, we were like, we. We understand that what we're proposing has to be palatable at, to a town meeting.
Yeah, and I think, I think you could, you could go to town meeting and present it. Either way, depending on what was going to lead to the most successful project. If, if, if the developers come in and say to us. When you begin to combine multiple size units, you know, into a project of this size. Um, you begin to get into some troublesome period. Maybe you want to. Just say that if that's the case, if that's what you need to do, isolate those parcels ahead of time. Don't include those in your overlay and build the. Market rate units on some of the existing frontage that you've already got. You know, and they just do it that way. And, and all sites might not be conducive for. That type of mix anyway. I mean, if you've only got ten units like Riverwalk and Concord, then. You probably don't want to include two McMansions along with eight smaller units, you know, so.
Yep.
So the language zoning might very well. On a sliding scale, say, you know, if you're going to, if you're on a thirty acre parcel and you're building twenty units, two of them can be. Market rate or something like that. That's the questions I think we throw at these developers that have been working on these projects already.
I spoke to a uh, broker who thought that that was a good idea because it would make it more palatable to the people who have just finished spending a huge amount of money on a house in town. You know, having the mix, having some more expensive homes mixed in.
Yeah.
So just, just throwing it out there.
Well, it may, it, it may very well generate a more traditional type of neighborhood too.
Yeah.
And that's ultimately what. I think we're all looking for.
Well, the twenty feet, um, you know, if you look at some of those communities in the book, right, they're. They're very, the homes are very close together, but there's common space that they're sharing. And I think that actually makes it kind of attractive because you. You've got, it's probably nicer having a, a big, for some people, having a large open space that you share that you don't have to mow.
Right.
And let leaves, right?
Yep.
And then you got this little, if, if, if it becomes a little community where people become friendly with each other. Um, being that close together may not be an issue. It's just more like suburban rather than rural.
Right.
And, and what, I mean, for instance, what the, they've included here in the language for the overlay that they're proposing is the suggested cluster sizes to ensure the development is creating. A sense of community around a common open space. If the cottage cluster gets too big, it begins to lose a sense of intimacy. The larger cluster community should arrange the units creating smaller clusters in the community. So, I mean, that's exactly what Jay did. That's exactly what um. You know, we've got in the design book and it's, I, it's.
Right, and what we've been. Right. And what we've been advocating for.
Yeah.
Yep. Agreed.
From a cost standpoint, there're gonna be things that we'd probably like to have in there. They're gonna be tough sells like the common, you know, how, how nice a common building do you put in, those kind of things and landscaping. And allowing the developer to put some more expensive homes in might help. There may be a trade for those things.
Right. Um, we have a hand up in the audience.
Okay.
Michael.
It's Michael Harding again. Um, Carolyn, I'm, I'm inclined to agree with you. I think uh, it'd be much more palatable for the abutters to see a sprinkling of a, a variety of houses and sizes in there. My other concern is that of course, although your sort of target figure of a sale price of say five hundred thousand is, is, is a nice one. I think in reality, by the time they contract a bit, Mr. Rhodes or another one has actually come around to building things, we're going to clearly be probably a couple of years down the road by the time they get onto the market. And I think by then, of course, six fifty or seven hundred will be the, the new figure rather than the five hundred. I can't see how that can actually be stopped because you can never put a limit on him as a business of what he can actually resell these for. So you is, you, you, that's a real problem. I, and I don't know how you're gonna solve that. And um, you can't, I don't think you can tie his hands legally because obviously he has to make a business function. On a separate issue, I believe that there is a pathway, a public right of way that joins this area of land with Gates Pond, which might be a rather nice, no?
I don't think so.
Okay, my wife was sure there was one. She's been here twenty-five years more than me, so I'll
Yeah, there is.
There's a trail.
Uh, okay. I didn't know if it was a nice immunity to link up with.
There's a trail?
There, there's, there's a trail that goes out behind um, Brook Lane that connects up and through to Gates Pond.
Yeah, joy, joy. It goes through my land. So, you know, I don't complain about that, but it's not a
Not a public.
It's not a public way.
I take that back then.
Right.
And, and, but, but we did create at Brook Lane common area that surrounds the whole project. And there's no reason to believe that we, we couldn't figure out a strategy with this parcel that, that there might be a right of way for people other than the individuals that live in the project. In case at some future date and conservation would play in on this, that we might get some other abutters to allow access across their land with some sort of easement, you know, so it, it's not out of the question. It ought to be included, certainly. Yeah.
But it doesn't exist now.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Right.
Okay.
Thanks, Michael. And Mr. Holyoke has his hand up.
Can we vote on whether we want him to speak?
That's right. James. Maybe he was just kidding.
Yeah.
Oh, James, you're muted.
He was just
Maybe he's pressing buttons.
You don't have to vote to him. He's doing it on his own.
I scared him. I'm sorry, James. You can, oh, wait. No, he's still muted.
I know.
Maybe he isn't even there.
Somebody raised his hand. All right, well. Oh, and now he's put his hand down. All right. Well, James, if you really did want to talk, raise your hand again. Oh, and now he's gone.
Whoa, Michael. I was hoping you'd say something. I, I would look forward to what he had to say.
Yeah, I've been talking to him. Time for a motion to adjourn?
Can I ask?
Wait, wait.
Question?
He, he's back and he raised his hand again.
It's his cat walking on his keyboard.
Right.
I think I figured it out.
There you go.
My question is, is why the thirty-eight units? Could you do sixteen to twenty in one part of the project? And in the other project, do a McMansion cul-de-sac, kind of a separate project that would allow the builder to get enough profit to make the whole project feasible? So instead of having forty new houses in town, that would bring more kids to the school system, more police, more highway, more fire, you would cut down the houses to twenty to twenty-five because the more services we have to provide, the higher our taxes are gonna be for the lower income people in town that already live here. But if you did it where you gave Mark a cul-de-sac of thirty-five hundred square foot houses he can make money on, it might make the project feasible for him to only do sixteen or twenty of these smaller houses.
Again, I go back to what our original mandate or original thought of, how do we increase the inventory of the segment we identified as being lacking for our housing inventory in town?
But as a broker, we get more, as many calls for larger homes right now as we are for smaller homes. And I bet if you looked at the overall inventory of Berlin's housing stock, I don't know this for sure, but I bet you it's probably sixty percent are under two thousand square feet. We just have a lack of inventory right now is what's going on. And because of the interest rates, a lot of people aren't moving. But is there a demand for, or a call for forty smaller homes to be built right now in Berlin? And these homes will probably be at five or six hundred thousand dollars, which is not when Berlin says we need more smaller affordable homes. They're talking about four hundred thousand. They're not talking about six hundred or five hundred thousand. So, we're building forty small homes and I just don't think there's a call for that from Berlin residents that we need that many. My question would be, what is Esther Brooks Publare, biggest single family homes division, or maybe the Dudley Road one, Mark did, but forty units is a lot. And I just think if we could cut that to sixty to sixteen to twenty, and then maybe a separate cul-de-sac that he can make his more money on, you might find the voters are more okay with that and more likely to put it through.
Well, the other thing too is we gotta realize that we're not, we're trying to create a, an overlay that gets to be used in multiple spots in town, not just this particular property.
So we're gonna put in more of these districts where we're putting in forty houses at a time? That are gonna be smaller acreage?
No, no. In fact, we, we're not doing anything other than writing an overlay.
Right.
That then is something that a, a proponent would take to town meeting and they could very well do what you're proposing. Um, they could very well on this site decide to put a small subdivision with six, single family, you know, three thousand square foot homes and then use the overlay on the other part of the parcel to create um, the cottage type housing that we're talking about. Or y- y- you know, you could find it in other parts of the town where we would only utilize the, I mean, it might be a, a four or five acre parcel where someone might very well decide that they wanted to try to build, you know, six units, for instance. Um, so we're just trying to create an overlay and that would not dictate that someone couldn't take a portion of the property and do what you're proposing in order to make the
The numbers work.
Well, it sounded like one of the neighbors, I don't know who it was, spoke, but that was something maybe the neighbors would like to as well. So that's why I was thinking about it. Uh, whoever spoke earlier.
Yeah, and that could happen um, independent of the overlay. I mean, it, it's a question of how the developer chooses to develop the site. And if it's a large enough site, they can build a hybrid where they use the overlay and try to reach some of the goals that we've had. And we initially, when we talked about this, when Ron Viverishka was first pushing it, it was in the ten to twelve, eight unit for, you know, project limit. Um, and that's frequently what gets mentioned in a lot of these. I mean, the overlay in Concord is eight, eight or ten units in each one of those. The Carlisle one has the Carlisle one may be a model that would be worth looking at more closely because it's a, the road that leads in, it almost appeared to me, looking at the layout, was um, some larger single family homes. And then it eventually got to a portion where there was a cell of, of uh, single family homes that were a much smaller size, much smaller footprint.
Yeah, I think I just thought it forty seemed like a lot, but I also know that Mark's gotta make money and it's gotta work financially. So if you could do a mix of it and bring down the number of homes. And it sounds like the neighbors would like to see some bigger homes as well, probably for their property values. It's something more that everybody would probably be agreeable and it'd actually get through town meeting.
But I, yeah, I'm, I'm not sure that our designing an overlay that has that broad spectrum accomplishes any quicker what you're proposing. I, I, it still seems to me as though a developer can choose to follow the route you're proposing and and split the project and create a, a hybrid in a way where
Right. We're, we're trying to write language that encourages smaller ho- houses.
Yes.
Uh, it's not specific for this lot. We're kind of picking Mark's brain about this lot. Um, and you know what is viable for this specific lot. But the, the warrant article is not, will not be about this lot.
But it'll directly affect this lot.
Sure.
And I mean, by the time we get there, we're gonna have a full design and everything showing it one way. And I just didn't know if there were other ways to do it because it seems like we're already honing in on one way of doing the project without considering maybe some other options that you know, maybe the neighbors and maybe the townspeople would be more likely to vote in. But, that's all I got.
But you, do you s- do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I know. I, I, I'm focused more on this project where I know what you're doing is the language of the overlay.
No, but I'm, I, what I'm saying is that Mark could certainly choose to split the parcel into a, two fifteen acre chunks and build one traditionally and one utilizing the overlay, if he could get the overlay to pass at town meeting.
Right, but if you're able to do thirty-eight, you know, closer homes and duplexes, I think that's the route anybody's gonna go with. But I don't know if that'll get by town. We'll see. I mean, I'm not a neighbor, so it doesn't affect me as much, but
But you're right. I mean, then you go to town meeting and the town says, no, we don't want the overlay in this particular spot. It's too large. But in another situation, um, they might very well say, here's a eight acre parcel and you proposed a dozen units and we're happy with that.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's what I thought originally, these kind of small houses were gonna be used as maybe twelve coming in or something like that. So that's why I'm saying if Mark was allowed to do sixteen or twenty and then do another cul-de-sac where he could you know, charge whatever he wanted on him, but it would only bring five houses in instead of another twenty.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we'd have to, like we said earlier, talk to the schools, see what some of the class sizes now are getting bigger in the kindergarten and first grade and is likely to stay that big. Even though maybe the third and fourth grades are small right now, it's not gonna probably be that way as we move forward because the kindergarten classes and first grade classes are a lot bigger than the fourth grade and third grade and fifth grade classes. So you might have right now where the school is, say, at eighty-five percent capacity, but as these bigger classes keep coming in, you're gonna see the school is probably gonna be very full. So I'd probably recommend talking to the school committee or whoever over there to see what the projections are of the school capacity. Because if we have to add another wing or anything, like I said, the taxes are gonna go up, which will affect our low income people, rather than building these for people that are gonna come from other towns.
Who should, who should we invite from the schools? I can try to get someone to come to the next meeting.
Uh, Michael Totman. Um, who else is on there? Julie Lee? Any of them? So, I mean, Campbell would probably have the, more the numbers.
I'd be inclined to invite the principal.
Yeah, I'm thinking John Campbell would probably have what the projections are and who's
Right. Right, because the school committee doesn't get involved with the numbers of students and stuff.
No, and they already know, they know what's coming in from the preschool and what to expect sort of a year in advance. All right, that's all I got. I'm going to bed.
Thank you.
See you later.
James.
Bye-bye.
Al Louise has her hand up.
She does.
Actually, the school um, sent a request for our preschool numbers. And James put in an extract request and we'll have those numbers for Thursday.
Excellent.
Perfect time.
What's an, what's an extract request?
Uh, we send a request if we need specific things from V R I S voter registration because that tells me all my voters, all my families, all my homes. Um, and then that will give us our numbers.
And when do you get that, Louise?
Uh, we'll have that Thursday. And then we'll do another one in February because we need that one, the one in February for bonding because we have to do it annually as part of um, the, the banks want that information.
Is that, it's coming electronically? Can you send me a copy?
If I can, I cannot share anybody under eighteen. So I could probably give you abstract numbers, but not names.
Oh yeah, well, numbers is all we need, right?
Yep.
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 Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? Does the clerk know when we voted to pay a bill of five thousand five thousand three hundred and fifty to Central Mass Regional Planning? It, it, the, it's dated three, seven thirty-one, so we must have voted on it in
Yeah, I was gonna say, this summer.
And, and I'm confident that we voted it, signed it and turned it in, but it, it uh, we've got to evidently do it again. It's for the uh, housing production plan.
When we, when we vote on these things, what, who is doing what to get them paid? It's not me.
So I've been running around with these, getting signatures and then taking them to June, which I recall doing with this one. Um,
Okay.
But I'm, I, I wanted to verify the fact that we voted on it.
Let me just take a look and see.
And if we haven't, we can do it again, but it should have been our, our August. Well, I mean, it might have been September, but I think it was probably our August meeting.
It couldn't have been May. Was that for the um, H P P?
Yeah. Seventy-five percent completion, the date of the invoice is seven thirty-one, so.
Because in, in May, we voted that amount for fifty percent completion.
Yeah, that was the fifty percent.
But I don't see that number in the minutes unless it was recent.
I, because I remember asking the question, is this the final bill? And you said yes. I know we voted on it.
The final one we did um, more recently, and that was for The final one we did um more recently and that was for four thousand.
I see.
Yep, this is the seventy-five percent. Well, let's make it simple. Then I move that we pay five thousand.
Nine twenty-six.
Nine twenty-six? Five thousand three hundred and fifty?
I have four eight eight one forty-two.
Yep, that's the final payment. So we're looking for the payment between the one that Jay talked about from May and the one you're talking about there.
Okay.
Hmm. I think this is July, huh?
Yeah, and it would have been either August or September, I imagine. Okay, so I move that we pay five thousand three hundred and fifty dollars to Central Mass for the seventy-five percent completion of the Housing Production Plan dated seven thirty-one.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask you to vote. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries the animus. Thank you.
You're around tomorrow, Jay?
Not tomorrow, but I'm back for the rest of the week. Well, I'm back Thursday and Friday and then I'm heading off to Denmark on Saturday.
So you're around Thursday?
Thursday, Friday and Saturday and.
Good, good. I'll track people down enough to get approval.
Awesome.
Thanks.
You have to vote. You have to make a motion.
Oh, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, and it doesn't require discussion. I'll ask you to vote. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries the animus. Thank you all.